Good evening, ladies and gents, welcome to Mers Town Council meeting. This is a recon meeting from the 24th of March 2022. You are invited to attend a recon meeting of Mers Town Council. We held in the main hall at Mers Community Centre, Polkshire Alhambres Convention at 7:30 on 3rd of the 7th of April 2022, for the purpose of transacting the following business. We will straight on to item number one, apologies for absence.
Councillors will sit and pray, Mr Chairman.
Item number two, declarations of interest, councillors should disclose pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in any item on this agenda. Do we have an L? No? Item number three, public question time, shall we receive questions from members of the public? If you'd like to put your hand up, please, I'll come to you. I'll move on to item number four then, recorded votes as per minute number 626, 2021/22, to consider which items on the agenda should be recorded votes.
Mr Chairman, councillor Milton has asked for recorded votes on agenda items 12, 13, 14, 16, 19, 20 and 21.
Thank you. Item number five, town council meetings to approve the respective minutes of the council meeting held on 3rd of February 2022. Have a move.
Sorry, I had one amendment, there was the vote about expenditure and going to public consultation. I think we actually agreed that it was like maintenance that had to happen, then it didn't have to go. That's what we agreed, didn't it? So it's something like a new roof or something like that. This will be really clear on that one, because we're going to end up with...
Yeah, so capital expenditure revenue versus revenue for you.
Yeah.
I'll pass on that, yeah.
Item number six, committee and subcommittee meetings to adopt the minutes of the committees and their perspective. Subcommittees as follows. Committee, leisure and recreation, 3rd of March 2022. Finance, 10th of March 2022. Policy and planning, 10th of March 2022. Have a move, members? Item number seven, accounts for payment, to confirm the payment of accounts and to approve the finance committee meeting held on 10th of March. Have a move. Item number eight, correspondence, the town to urge to report on correspondence in respect of the following. Alan?
Just one, Mr Chairman, from a parishioner, who's asking, I'm approaching the meeting, could you all desist from spending any more funds under councillor Kenyon's stewardship and just agree to conduct business only sufficient to keep HTC ticking over?
Well, just one minute. On that remark, it's basically nothing to do with stewardship. This council has made all the decisions, the last three years. The last three years, so it's nothing to do with stewardship. As for not spending any, I reiterate what my colleague Donovan Adams said, that if we do have things to spend, then obviously councillors won't spend it on repairs or anything, so you can't, you know...
It also means that you won't be able to spend on, you know, your seaside event, because that's not ticking over, is it? We can't not spend on things that benefit the public. I think, you know, we've already got in place that if it's large expenditure, then it goes to public consultation. I just don't think we should be saying we're not going to spend on anything, that wouldn't make sense.
No, I mean, what's budgeted for, Alan, I think is, you know, seaside adventures and things like that, so we've already got it in the budget. So, you know, we just can't stick to operating costs, you know, we have to move on with that. So are we all in favour to move on, yeah?
Just a minute.
I'm going to come to him on, just a minute, yeah, so are we all in favour to move on? Like, yes, sir.
Sorry, it's just that we couldn't hear Alan's statement there. It was difficult to follow.
Sorry, yeah, it's from a parishioner.
If you can't hear it.
From a parishioner, and he says, could you all desist from spending any more funds under councillor Kenyon's stewardship and just agree to conduct business only sufficient to keep HTC ticking over?
So I think we've given answer to that, and obviously we've decided that we can't stick to that, otherwise we might get any progress. Item number nine, Ukraine, to consider any support for the Ukraine people. Alan?
Yes, Mr Chairman. As members will know, we've got the flag flying outside, because the council have... Yeah, the flag is flying outside. In terms of any financial support that the council may wish to give, for example to the Red Cross, something like that, that is lawful under general power competence, which this council has. Just one thing to bear in mind, though, if the council does want to make donation to Red Cross, ETL or whoever, then bear in mind that you are sending British money abroad. Not unlawful, but these are born in mind.
I propose, Mr Chairman, we'll give up donation a thousand pounds to Red Cross. I'll second that, Chair. Are we all in favour of that amendment?
Yeah.
Could we also look at getting some collection boxes to put in Lakeside? Yeah, maybe, I don't know if people would be willing, but yeah, just maybe put some collection boxes out as well at high...
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So that proposal is carried to send a thousand pounds at Red Cross, Alan, to help Ukraine and replace collection boxes in Lakeside, other ends of town council facilities, yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number 10, to confirm the respective dates for the annual town council meeting and annual town council meetings.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I'd recommend that the annual council meeting be held on the 12th of May and the annual town meeting a week later on the 19th of May.
Is that the earliest we can do?
The annual council meeting has to be May, and the annual town meeting has to be held between 1st of March and 1st of June.
So we've got 12th of May, you come up with your number.
19.
19.
So it could go a week earlier, I'm bothered.
Well, voting, aren't we?
It could be done earlier.
It was voting, you know.
Yeah, it is, but yeah, on the collection day, yeah, on the...
Tell that they're the first days.
The first available days, I can't...
So is everybody in favour of available for that, yeah?
Yeah.
Item number 11, location of council and councillor committee meetings, to review the location of council committee meetings. I mean, I think we could probably share this app between here and Fitzwilliam Centre, what committee meetings are.
Well, there's that in the council chamber, Mr Chairman, I'd recommend your council meeting still stay here, because you can see quite a lot of people. We would struggle to get this number upstairs, but committee meetings could see them upstairs, and all the meetings could go to Fitzwilliam, so...
I don't know. Can I just say about the parking, though, at Fitzwilliam? That it's, there's no parking facility for you to actually be able to park. So that would just be my concern, unless someone can tell me where I could park.
Now, we're just going to come into that, there's no parking facilities up there at all. You would not get these people, you would get all councillors up there. So that's a bit of a daft idea, if you know what it's like up there.
I mean, we did have a couple last year, I think, or the year before, so, I mean, due to the amount of people that's attending now...
There's only ever been one up there.
So, due to the amount of people that's attending now, then, are we all in favour of keeping the community centres, youth chambers upstairs, yeah?
Council meetings and committees upstairs.
Yeah, committees upstairs, yeah, are we all in favour of that?
As long as that still allows for recording upstairs.
Yes. As long as public can manage to get upstairs, the WIFs meet working now, so...
Item number 12, Platinum Jubilee, to consider the following in respect of the Platinum Jubilee. A, type of celebrations to be held. And B, a request to hold a fun fair and jubilee week attended Water Park at 11:00 from May to 5th of June. Provisionally, I think, fun fair were booked in anyway, weren't you telling?
Well, this proved an answer, Jim.
Yeah, provisionally before, that's part of that, so... Is that it, would not be answered, sir?
No, Mr Chairman, can members clarify whether they would allow the fun fair to sell drinks and food? Because obviously we're rivaling Capita.
No, I think, just on that, what we've done before, we know, what we've asked for them before.
I don't know, because we sold food and everything before.
Can't we make it into a proper thing, if the fun fair's going to be there, have stalls? And make it a proper celebration, get kids down, fancy dressed up.
Well, yeah, I want to propose, or can we bring the summer seaside event, bring that forward to that date? As councillors just said, have competitions for best crown, best dressed up as queen or a prince or king or whatever, I think, full of kids.
Have a red, white and blue day.
Red, white and blue day, get bunting up, sort of thing. Have the fun fair there as well as part of the celebrations. And also, show some of the bands that we've got, so a bit later on, have we still got the bands? You know, from like, a couple of the turns on, in the Lakeside, similar to what you did at the August bank holiday again.
A proper family day.
And then of a weekend, we could actually wait till they've already put in a thing that you can, if you can get funding, to have street parties. So they could have a street party as well, make it a proper weekend.
Yes, dear.
And all in favour of what you've just said, that you've got to bear in mind that Seaside Day event gets a lot, a lot of people that were complaining on go and on to, you know, well, everywhere they were complaining, because it was too hot.
It's that weekend, all other places are going to have the same kind of thing, so they're not going to, if they're going to have it in their own village, it's not good for us.
It's not good for us. Why can't we just have the seaside event as it is, because that gets a lot of people in? And have the street party theme for the jubilee, that'd be great, on the, keep seaside event as it is, have a big event.
I agree with that.
A big event, a big thing, you're just adding something slightly different than the seaside event.
Well, I agree with what you're just saying.
Similar to seaside events, duplicated with jubilee events. Plus the fun fair, so jubilee event.
So, I will look at Friday.
The actual day, yeah. Monday, Friday, the actual day.
So I'm looking at Friday, 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 Alan, give it nice, John, put things together to organise.
Could we also have things like on the TV, I'm guessing there'd be parade on the TV, so make sure the TV's at appropriate times, play it out loud, and that sort of stuff.
And that fun fair, do you want to allow them to sell some drinks or not?
No, let's go, let's carry on that way, Lakeside, Lakeside.
Lakeside, okay.
Can they manage the number of people that I've built the call?
No.
Just get extra staff on. It's always a busy thing on seaside events. Staff have got it off now.
Can we come to on it, please?
I think staff have got it off 2T now, because they use the, it's not on a car every day, so they fill the car, we outdoes everything, they pay, they collect, they go out. It's not as, it's not as hectic as it used to be before. They've got the way around it now, so...
We just wrote bad press, because people said, oh, wait, it's at Water Park and queue, you know.
That's, yeah.
But as far as the airport, airport.
Let me tell you, on seaside events, some people are complaining because we have to queue up for a free, for a free face painting and that. We're complaining in queue, they've been standing for a while, and we've got other, you know, you're always going to get...
The council, it was just, it was just finished, so why not, things like, paying on again, just get, so we're getting complained again for...
We've got the contact, so we can arrange that.
Yes, yeah.
On the food side, why don't we have people that can sell snacks? Because I might not want a Carberry, I might want a snack or a hot one.
They do hot dogs, burgers, they do everything, Shane.
Wait, is this burger van working?
I think...
Yeah, hamburger vans on sale, yeah.
I think if, I think if it's the seaside event, and it's going to be extra special, because it's Platinum Jubilee, we're going to have a lot of extra people there, and a lot of extra people just turning up to fair, would it not be feasible just to let them operate one burger van and drinks and that for people that are just going to turn up?
We've got it, we've got it.
I can see what you're saying.
It's 200 metres away from Capita.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to generate...
And if the people just turn up, just turn up at fair, they're not going to go down to Capita, at least they're going to drink and they're not going to...
Maybe we could sort of suggest we're a couple of that. Maybe we can source that, put your hat on, Pat, in.
Yeah, celebrate services, if there's 200, 300 people up there, and we've got 500 down at Capita, at least you can provide some...
One food unit.
One food unit.
Candy plot.
Candy plot.
I would say that's what it means, once candy plot, our kids have been asking me already about that.
I think it's not going to be busy, I don't think it's a fact to us down at Capita. So are we all in favour of that, yeah? Item number 13, film night, to consider holding film nights attended community centre.
It's out of my idea, I mean, they are quite popular now, and it could get kids off street once a month. Get them in here, get them to watch films.
With like, a burger and a lot, a lot.
Yeah, I said popcorn maker, stuff like that.
Some popcorn.
Just give them, get them some, get them off streets, for just one night.
Which one do you need?
Or it'd be...
That's, that's, it's something that's down to everybody, that one, I can't really say, but...
Does the licence name it for this one, do you know?
Yeah, there is, that, we got one in this, because I asked for both this one and Fitzwilliam, Fitzwilliam had got one, so I said if it took off here, we could get one for Fitzwilliam. So it gives kids something to look forward to once a month. And they come in, they've got wifi.
Give it a go.
So roughly, what would costumes be, Alan?
Well, depends on what tour they're going to see, if it's the latest blockbuster of it's, you know. Casablanca, you know, but, long story short, we did it South Kirby previous year, we did it there, we did do the dancing, because it was, it stuck it probably to be a popular programme, a programme film.
I don't think it's any use to wear, mate.
But not being part of...
No, not fitted well, then.
You're talking in the low hundreds, something like that, but if you want to add on free drinks, that sort of thing, maybe more...
Not so much, but drinks and popcorn.
As long as it's heavily subsidised, you know, it's not just pocket money, you know, you're not charged...
I mean, if you let them come in for free and charge them for popcorn and sweets and crisps and stuff.
I'd say give it a try.
So, next question is, would it coincide with youth club allegiance? Because obviously they're licensed to the older children, aren't they?
We could involve them, we could sort today's hour and manage you, of course, couldn't we? I assumed it wanted to be a Saturday, assuming, absolutely, but it could be a night, couldn't it, yeah?
Yeah, whichever day, I just think, I just think it just gives kids something to look forward to.
It's a good point, having a need to satisfy, but...
We can hit that, then, in between as well.
Yeah.
Don't go to youth club, to old tip pub, they've got no tip pub.
Sorry, I'm too much a pub, you mean?
Yes, councillor, that is.
Well, can I suggest that we get a licence for television anyway at the community centre, so they can have a screen up. We need screen here, because it's outside, if you're playing music or anything on it, you're still about to have a licence. In fact, music, I haven't got a P R S as well.
We've got that.
Have you got that?
I've got it here, yeah.
So...
They need to have a licence up at Fitzwilliam Centre.
Why not get, the cheap ones are done, is to get a screen up and a licence for up there as well? Because when they're doing the, when they're at the community centre, they can have some music come on, on screen.
That'd be good, that.
Why don't, why don't we buy a flat screen, Fox William Centre, get a licence?
Did they have one? Did they have one?
Is it going to be a projector this month?
Yeah, it'd be better with a projector, wouldn't it? Yeah, but they had a flat screen up there and everything.
So, have you noted that, yeah, and then if it come back and what films?
Will there be volunteers, Maxine, to work with alongside?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Obviously, because...
Especially if it's recently done, it doesn't...
Some of that, not have appropriate staff, can you?
Well, there will be volunteers, there will be some volunteers here to help.
By far, I'm going to apply to number 14 then. Free legal advice service reviewed, to review the free legal advice service provided by the council on a monthly basis at Mers Community Centre.
Yeah, just a review, Mr Chairman, over the past year, there's been, 10 parishions have been helped with the advice service. Obviously, the past 12 months hasn't been typical, with such a committee with the council, whether you want to continue with it. I recommend continuing with it, but review it every six months' time.
Continue with it, if it helps one person, it's better than none at all.
Can we advertise it more than what we do, Alan, possibly? Because a lot of people that, you know, that don't quite, didn't know that this facility is available, what parishioners... So if we advertise that, anybody that's in hardship or, you know, that does need us, and is in a gap of port to go and see one, I think it's a great thing for them. Because really, I wouldn't advertise that for people and the kids of his age. Item number 15, council tax mitigating grant, to consider asking Wakefield Council to refund the council for several years worth of council tax mitigation now. Alan?
Yes, Chair, it's 10 years now, Chair, they haven't released that grant, Chair, it's approximately 1.1 million. Members of the public are going to pay this, Chair.
It's out of order. Just out of order, while I read to my person, that gentleman, I want to hear it. If you miss out again, please.
It's 10 years now, Chair, they haven't released this mitigation grant now, it's approaching 1.1 million now, we've paid extra to Wakefield Council. And it's out of order, Chair. All right, I'll just give some figures like over that, these are just approximate. I mean, in that time, Band A had paid over £500 extra, Band B, £580 extra, Band C, £660 extra, Band B, £740 extra. And, you know, time's a hard chair, and I think they should release that money. They released it in 2012, Chair, and then, you know, for some reason, they haven't released it.
I think the district councillors swayed, because Wakefield Council had to provide extra funding for mental health and different other things, and I think district councillors and some parish councillors at that time voted that Wakefield could take that as the work of the short form, but I do appreciate, now, I think Wakefield have got £100 million in reserves. Can we write a letter to Wakefield, Alan, asking them if they'd release that tool, which would come great? And then, you know, to probably reduce council tax or visa to residents of this community. Are we all in favour of that, then?
Definitely, will they listen? They never have listened, have they? It's as simple as that.
Item number 16, Lakeside Cafe Bar, the town clerk to report accordingly on the following.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, on regards to lift.
Alan, just a moment, can you do my, because this gentleman just described a meeting.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, regarding the lift, so far I've got one quoted from K O N D, K O N D, that's the firm that we used to, that we use now to maintain the lift here, and that is for £18,000 plus VAT, plus ancillary work, of course. The reason I mention all that together, because that's getting close to the £25,000 about the consultation. Also as well, members need to consider, there are various, well, there are a few locations where the lift could go at the Cafe Bar, assuming the council still wants to do it. Very quickly, the three locations possibly could be adjacent to the fire escape, inside in the soft play area, and then outside at the backside door, so that we would come in on the first floor and be offering from there. And so there's variable possibilities, the cost obviously is close to £25,000 anyway. And if members want to continue with it, I recommend that especially supported to handle a tender process. And if members do want to continue with it, it would likely be £25,000 or so, so we need to start consultations as well.
Well, regarding consultation, we'll get the VAT back, don't we, Alan? Eventually, yeah. So if it's £18,000 plus VAT, then we'd get the VAT back, so it won't be below that threshold.
Did we ask for a quote or...
We're going to say that, you can ask for a business plan.
I'm still going to get them.
Yes, dear.
When you say playhouse, we're not going to be taking our house out of play area, are we?
No, I think...
What do you mean, then, the play area, because we don't need to be making that any smaller?
I don't think it should be anywhere near the play area.
I think outside anyway, that.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think outside, then going up through, you know, through...
We're going to get taxed back or not, if we have a £25 grand in...
Conference, because that's big enough, there is a window there already, so...
So, I think the best thing with this is, if we can get some need to planning for us, Alan, so we'd have a look at the plan. Because we might need planning anyway.
It's not going to cost us £25,000.
And then the folk will come in with that, then.
No, but we need the business plan first, we need to understand how much money we're losing by not having this lift. Not paying somebody to tell us how much it's going to cost until we know, because we've got an estimate, we've got a rough idea. Is it going to be more than 18 grand that we're losing every year?
Well, I don't think it's, I take your point on that, but the issue here is, people, people are the judges, perhaps, we...
We've asked for this, we've already talked about it in the last meeting, how we've got the gala tent.
We get last time, weren't we?
No, we asked for both, to be fair, we asked for the quotes and the business plan for us.
Yes, we did.
We talked about the gala tent that can be put up, that has got access for everyone. So I think, let's be fair until we've got that business plan. But not spend any money trying to work out it is until we've seen that.
Yeah, we need a business plan.
Well, we've already, I mean, I mean, how many functions have we missed?
I don't know, this is why we want the business plan, or I asked for that.
I'll figure that, Jim, then.
So that, we need to defer it, don't we? I thought we should have afforded, so we've got that business plan.
I second that.
You can, you can still get a quote, I mean, it don't cost anything for a quote, not the quote, no, but the quote then, but usually design where it's going to go. So you'll get a more accurate figure on that cost, as well as what you also get a business plan. But one of the main things are...
Well, that won't be a cost to the council, to get that quote.
It shouldn't, no.
If there's no cost, then I agree.
Yeah, but we're not getting people in planning it, because that will cost you.
One of the things that you have to take into consideration here is Equality Act 2010. Disabled people that can't get up there to go to funerals are used that for...
But the thing is, you've got your established thing, disabled can use that.
You've got a facility that you can use downstairs, so that you can't do that, you can't use that.
You can't push it like that.
You have no disabled play stuff, so you can't quote the Equality Act 2010 and say when you've no play stuff for the kids.
If we have a car during a Wednesday, it's really well received now, it's formed downstairs. And somebody wants a funeral, the only place that they can have it is upstairs, if you've got three or four people, it's in wheelchairs.
Like with states before, why don't you get stairlifts?
You're struggling to provide that facility for them. A chairlift, you wouldn't be able to use a chair, you won't get insurance for it, people can't get in and out of it.
That's lies, that, because I know, I know...
How many children in wheelchairs actually go to the Lakeside, down to the park, compared to how many people have asked for a funeral or a birthday party? You have got lots of children in wheelchairs or poor mobility, and those children are sat in wheelchairs watching their brothers, their sisters, their friends, playing on play stuff, like the swings, the slide, but you have nothing for them children, so you can't quote the Equality Act being fair to people and treating people equally, when you are literally being prejudiced against these children in wheelchairs. So you have no play stuff.
The item, I take your point, it's a good point, but the item on the agenda is about the lift, and I'm just quoting from people that contacted me, where they've wanted to use the upstairs and they can't use it because...
I don't understand why they're contacting you, why are they contacting Alan? There should be contacting Alan, not you.
No, because, well, I'll tell you, it won't be next door neighbor.
That's one person.
Yeah, so obviously she asked me, and I said, I'm sorry, we don't have a lift. And then obviously, it's been banned for about the last two years.
Can we move progress?
So, what details you've got, Alan, yeah? Item number twenty, deputy town clerk to consider recruiting the second. Sorry, me, me, I apologise. Heating system at the lakeside capybara, Alan.
Yeah, just to confirm, Mr Chairman, I've met a few heating engineers on site, and I don't have any formal quotes yet, because they've all told me, every one of them, it will certainly cost more than twenty five thousand pounds, without doubt.
But it's an essential, that's why we're saying, this is what we're saying about essential things.
So it would definitely have to go to consultation.
It won't, it's essential, it's essential if it's heating, you can't not heat it early.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Can we get some tenders for that, Alan?
Appoint a specialist to handle the temperatures, Mr Chairman.
Can I suggest that we, we're ASAP on this as well?
Yeah.
The heat is on full blast, you can't turn it down, so once it's on, it's on.
We need it sorted out.
And you've got to be thinking about the cost of electricity and stuff.
If it, if it's, if you've got it on early, you could have it on low, but it won't turn it on.
No, I know it won't, so this is what it needs.
It's going to cost an absolute bomb, isn't it? You need to get it sorted.
So sometimes when you've got it on low or medium all the time, it's cheaper than switching it on and off.
I didn't mention it last year, it's, you know.
Well, it will mention it.
That's what I'm saying, we've had a year where we've been, having it on in winter, in rooms that we don't use, because, and at night temperature, everybody, they're either hot, red hot, or cold.
Because some people can't cope with it when it's too hot, so if you add it on a decent amount, temperature, permanently, and it wouldn't cost as much, the building would be warm enough.
So you've got that, Alan, yeah? So if I move on to item number seventeen, then committee membership to consider adding the members of the committees for the remainder of the council year. I don't think anybody's going to problem with that.
Mr Chairman, there are three members that aren't on the standing committees, two of them can go on, you can't have the full fifteen, so there are three currently, Captain Mitchell, Iran, and Fletchie, that aren't on the committees. It's up to the council now, if it wants to appoint one or two of those to the committees, because you can't appoint.
I'm happy not to, there's one meeting left and I can't make it, so I'm happy not to be on it.
Shane, would you like to have one?
Yeah, is the pay on that coming it off?
Not something like that, a little weekend.
Yeah.
And Council Mitchell too, is that right?
I can't, Alan, it's, it's grandkids. Item number eighteen, revolting protection GDPR and freedom of information policies, to review the council's suit and policies in respect of jurisdiction GDPR and freedom of information. Alan.
Yes, Mr Chairman, yes, it's well reviewed, reviewed, and then accordingly, as per the ICSE's recommendations, I'd recommend approval, and then tomorrow, open the website.
But it's a light, don't you?
We have to move on. Item number twenty, deputy town clerk to consider, sorry, nineteen, meal delivery service review, to review the meal delivery service. That we've been doing for the last one year and eleven months, two years, maybe two years, yeah. Well, I've been doing meal delivery service, it started on a Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday, through pandemic, with my grandson, Peter, who's only ten, he's done a great job. And I think altogether, we've delivered in excess of fifteen thousand four hundred dinners. So if somebody else would like to have a go at it, someone's coming up.
I was going to say, so I've been asking around, so these were started during Covid, and correctly, so yes, that's great, that's a great, a great job. Is it time to possibly stop these now? Have I started with big councils? And, I've been in touch, Kirby stopped theirs, I'm not saying big councils are over, similar councils, like parish councils, Kirby stopped theirs, they've all stopped them now. Covid, Covid is not over, I'm not saying it's over now, but according to government, it is now effectively over. And there's also issues regarding, have you got your business insurance on your cars, have you got your, your food ID, your certificate to deliver meals, that sort of thing?
Well, we have.
You have, as are the people, that sort of stuff.
No, but I'm saying, I'm, I'm, particularly over two years now.
I'm not saying that.
All I'm saying is, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm doing my last one on Sunday, and if somebody else would like to continue it, then I'm not going to problem with that. I've got issues coming up where I won't be able to do it. I mean, for the last one year and eleven months, every Sunday I've been there at eleven o'clock, and I finish it half past one, two o'clock.
I would pause that on Sunday is the last one that we do, our second one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, go on.
I find it would be very sad to stop these meals, with old folk waiting for the dinner, waiting for it, that's the only thing they live for most of them, you know. It would be very, very sad to stop them, enjoy it. Part of these old folk do not get enough meals.
They don't get out, do they?
They don't even get out.
And why we're taking them their meals, they're not going out, supposed to be trying to bring them out.
So what I'm saying is, it would be very sad to stop them.
I agree, it would be very easy to stop them. I, I agree with Council Fletchie, where it is now about encouraging people to come back out, to get back out, there's people stuck in their houses, let's do things to get them out, let's have one, let's have one of the days for the meals where it's just vulnerable and not, and not waiting for these. But to come to the lakeside, where the staff are wearing masks and they've done the test, that sort of thing. I think as the delivery for meals, all the other things like that, regarding other councils are stopped, that's not saying we don't have to stop or carry on, I just think it's come, it's come to a natural, a natural end now, is my, my view.
Why, the way we're holding it, it's holding.
They're not coming out, they're still not coming out.
If I've got no volunteers to do it anyway, then it won't be done, but I have to say this, because I know this for a fact, and Jim, the chairman, even confirming, that some people don't actually get to the door for the meal. And I think he puts it for in, in, in the lap mainly, so there is, there is some people that don't, I agree, we've got to get, we've got to try and get them out to come down to park. I think some already are, but there is some that don't.
How many do you deliver, or some of them?
Yeah, can't, can't come.
There's no.
Sorry.
Sorry, Shane.
I didn't hear you talking, took the mic away.
I know you and Nancy did it, and I did it, but I'll be honest, it got on top of me, because, you know.
But what I'm saying is, is those that feel, like yourself, that they need the meal, go down to the, like, lakeside and go and give it them. But I, I don't want to do that, that's what, that's all I'm saying.
You and Nancy have done your bit.
Yeah, 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 well, it's not capable of doing our bit, it's just that they don't want to do it, do it, and then they don't, and I think it should go to a vote, who wants to do it? So I don't want to do it.
Or do you pay, do you pay member or staff to do it? If it makes, if it means that much, do we, you know, do we ask somebody if it does that as part of their role?
There's nobody.
Why is there nobody?
Was it the curriculum, council maintainers, staff, capybara staff?
It's taken them away from the job.
It's not, not to deliver meals, you know.
Could you not employ somebody to do that on a Sunday? I'm just exploring options, I'm playing devil's advocate here.
How long does it take, Chair, to get, to get round them?
Well, I, I usually go down at eleven o'clock, and I'm finished between at one and two o'clock, and then, you know, Liz Kinsey, it's what we've done then, so, yes, Lyn.
Sorry, I was aware of this item being of great interest to the community before I came in tonight, and I've actually got people commenting on the live feed, that there are a number of elderly people that would be gutted if this stopped. Now, if you're struggling to find people to take over from councillor Kenyon, why don't you pause it for, once councillor Kenyon has to stop, and ask the community if you can find some volunteers, preferably DBS checked volunteers, that'll take it over and do the delivery. You provide the meals, and see if the community will step up and actually do the deliveries for you.
Who's doing the insurance?
I'm, I'm just suggesting what people are putting forward here, if there, if there's a possibility, the elderly people would like to continue.
Lady in black, yes.
Can I just say, well done to yourself and your ten year old grandson for, for delivering down during Covid.
Thank you.
Um, down at Fitzwilliam, uh, site to where Red Roof Nursery is, they started the club on a Monday, and it's a fire that under bad, a massive uptake. More people are coming out now, and I know there are some elderly who cannot get out, but could there be nowhere where someone could, like, pick them up, or, you know, some kind of, so to get them out? It obviously meant for to get out and to talk to other people. You can see that from your, and your man spoke, people coming in and talking, and more people coming in, and it's out of its own way. So maybe, is there any way that, you know, someone could put them a lift down to one part?
Once, once again, it's, it's insurance and, you know.
Well, I, I've got business insurance, as any other people got business.
I have in a minibus, they'll have their insurance.
Yeah.
There is a minibus then.
Things we are telling, do they, will they, like you use theirs, you know, may, for a minimum fee or maybe to support the community, I don't know if there's still not many of those.
So obviously, there are ideas that can be explored, so for now, can, can we put it on pause, because obviously, when I do see people, just be saying.
Just to clarify then, so this Sunday will be the last one for the time being, then we'll ask the community to, to use volunteers, and every duty table's fine, something like that.
If, if we could phone everybody around, Alan, to tell them this is the last one for now, and it's on a yield, then to come forward, yeah?
Now, I just ask a question, why don't you use Wakefield Council, they've got all facilities, vehicles, et cetera, I'm sure they'd help you out.
Right, well, we've got another option.
We could go to district councillors and get them to.
Like, and ask them if they're saying no, then fair enough, right? So what I'm thinking is that the elderly people might not be able to get out, I'm not there yet, but maybe one day I will be.
So if we've got these, these ideas put forward, we've been researching options, yeah, and if we can just inform them what we intend to do on this Sunday, the last one for now, yeah?
Can we, please, hold on, go on, can we please look at if we could employ someone to take charge of three hours wages, because if you do it in three hours, then we could potentially give somebody local as well an extra three hours, there might be a delivery driver for pizza shops or whatever, you know, people do take on them extra hours, especially on a weekend when the kids are not at school. Can we just look at how much it costs us?
Mother begging for drivers for pizza shops at the moment.
Just, just. So, item number twenty, then, deputy town clerk to consider recruiting to the vacancy deputy town clerk role, Alan.
Yes, Mr Chairman, there is a budget for this, if the council approves it, we need to appoint, I was about to say, members will be involved, but members should be involved in this, and so to appoint a recruitment panel of the history.
I'd like to be on that one.
Mr Chairman, after the vote, we apply for that straight away.
Yeah, yeah.
Straight away, can I have a vote on that?
Please, Alan, please, Mr Chairman.
Yeah, like Alan said, if you want to go for it, we have to nominate a panel.
Do you think you could, you always be on on the evening? Generally not, we could have it late afternoon, we'd be flexible, if you get it, it's the people that are coming to do it, so we can be flexible, we can arrange most of them for the evening, but there might, there's bound to be some date, but with plenty of hours, we can sort something out.
If we do recruit, can we make sure that we qualify them?
Extremely qualified.
Well, I'd, I'd suggest that the, on the person's spectrum, that that would be a desirable, not essential, because it casts a wider net then, doesn't it?
Is that, I mean, if that's an I want to do it.
Oh, God, yeah.
I mean, the, the, the situation that we find ourselves in is that, like, I mean, it's been not as busy because of Covid, but now that we're coming through Covid, if Alan is tech now, or if he's on holiday for three or four weeks, then, you know, we'll struggle to get.
He's not going on holiday, it could be four weeks. Get it off.
So.
Can I?
If Alan's off or, or away, then we need, we need to get somebody in that package to continue in his absence.
If he gets a day off.
Jim?
No, I'll just go with what you've said, we need somebody professional in the, in the field.
So are we all in favour of that, and then?
If you're in favour of that, then we'll discuss the panel.
We, we have got the budget for that, we're on the panel. Jane?
I can hear that, no?
Badville Panel.
Graham?
I'd like to be on panel.
I'd like to be on, as well. Not one side.
Yeah, so what's, councillor Anwesman, councillor Herd, councillor Hardaker, councillor Fletchie?
Any others?
Don't want to scare them all.
Well, you need, you need another one.
And then obviously, it can be you and.
I, I committed this one evening, before, have you noticed?
If it was just three, I would say to appoint a reserve, but you've appointed four as well.
You want five, you've got to have another number.
Alan, Alan can.
Why not as all?
Because it's going to be scary for them, come on, I wouldn't like to have to go in front of everybody.
If it's four, it's not bad, but if it's a dozen, that really is.
Yes, it's too many.
You want either three or five.
Councillor Kenyon, so I just, to go back to the meals, I've just had a lady message to say thanks to you and your grandson from the Holgate residence, they've really appreciated it.
Thank you.
He's a lovely lad, is his grandson.
Could I just suggest maybe.
I don't know, he texts him.
Jimmy's grandson a little gift. I don't know what, what, or something, I don't know if that's allowable under council rules.
I mean, that's what, and then this.
What's that?
So I just gave Jimmy's grandson a little gift of twenty quid gallons of voucher, if that's allowable, under council rules.
Yeah.
With a ten year old to do all of it.
Yeah, have you met him?
Personally, I haven't now.
I am, and he is such a lovely lad.
I know, I think, I think I'd like to.
He is so polite.
You wouldn't think it was gingerly, would you?
Oh, gosh, no. Plus he's good looking, you know.
Very nice.
Yeah, well, it's true, it's, it's not a bit like, it's not a bit like his grandad.
Item number twenty one, forensic audit to consider having a forensic audit of the council's account, Alan.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, if members approve this, there's two things, two fundamental things, appoint a firm on the council to look at the, the accounts of what period and what terms of reference.
I don't have a problem with that, what, what, what time are we talking?
Well, it's like how much is a car, isn't it, but for example, Frankel's charge five thousand, but you can get a local firm that would charge half that.
So we're in favour of that, yeah?
Well, well, can we just go on a bit, can we?
Yeah, we need to make sure that we put things forward on the one pocket of agenda.
Wait a minute.
Councilman.
Right, so we'll vote on it.
No, wait a minute, we've, we've got questions to ask about it.
So I think what we need to do is make sure that we're putting in our own questions, so the things that we're hearing about constantly, petty cash, Amazon sales, you know, where things, where money's going, what things are, all those sorts of things, we need to, as a council, put our questions into Alan, and that all needs to be covered in that report, do you agree?
Yes, yes, definitely. And we also have a complete forensic computers as well, because I know that will be in with.
That's a different kettle of fish, it's not, I must say, it's not possible, but that's the data audit, not an account audit.
But you can have it on, you can have it.
You can be, you need to have reasonable grounds to do that, if, for example, someone saw me looking at something I shouldn't do on there, that would be the reasonable suspicion to do it, you can't just do it as a fishing exercise.
Well, my motion is.
Sorry, your forensic audit is only as good as the questions that you're actually asking the forensic auditor to investigate, and they can look at every aspect, any paperwork, anything. So it doesn't have to be that they can't look at computers, they access everything.
Yeah.
So, sorry, I've, I've misunderstood, I assume councillor had made an IT audit, my apologies, I, I think that what she meant was, it's my fault for getting across wires, she said, basically, look at it financial information, but it's on paper and a computer.
No, we're not fine, no, no, IT audit.
Because really, a forensic auditor, like your purchase order, your delivery note, and your invoice should all correlate. If they don't, then the accountants that are doing your books now aren't doing your job correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's fundamental accountability, the council's talking about IT.
So what they will be looking at, a forensic auditor, if you were to be saying, right, I'll just say, table and chairs, they will, if you're questioning how many table and chairs. They will, if you're questioning how many table and chairs, they will, you will say, have we got those many table and chairs? From my point of view, I've already picked up that your asset register doesn't give you that information.
With asset registers, there are divinity amounts below which the, you don't list them.
No. For your insurance purposes, you should have every item listed, and where it is. And depreciation and everything else.
Insurance purposes, we do do that, yeah, but that's not published. The published asset register, which comply with the, with the audit and guidance, has divinity amounts. For different councils, like Wakefield, for example, chances are nothing below a thousand. I think for memory, ounce below five hundred, something like that. But you don't have divinity amounts, otherwise you'd be putting bottles of water on there. So some things aren't on, but that's the reason why.
Yeah. But it's all about the questions that you ask your forensic auditor. And you can go back, once you've got that report, if you don't feel that it has answered the question. So it, it isn't, say for instance, the charge of five thousand pounds, that is the fixed amount that they will charge you. No matter how many times you go back and ask the questions. I know this personally.
Yes, Becky?
I'm really sorry, but going back to the meals.
Can you take my scottus?
I'm really sorry, um, really sorry, going back to the meals. A lady called Nicholas Smith has offered online to deliver the meals and with business insurance at an expense. But aside, let you know that.
Can you ask for an email, please?
Already done.
You ask for an email, councillor, please.
Already done.
Yeah.
And then you've got to make sure that all the receipts are being shown and everything for what's happened.
Well, they should be done with the internal external order each year, which Alan will confirm.
Effectively, it's another internal audit.
Yeah.
So in the same.
So, we're talking computers then, so you're talking about computers in these offices, yeah?
Yeah, again, my understanding, in terms of the finance, obviously, the auditor would look at the books of account, whether it's a physical book of account.
It's not a little bit of personal information on these computers, is it? People's personal information.
No, there wouldn't be, but on a computer, they could be. So if this, this is, my understanding was, it's purely about the finances.
Yeah, so, so for example, you've got, I don't know, it'll say on your, your report, you spent sixty quid on stationery. You know, what was, so the go to, look at what that order was and just.
A big old question, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we're constantly being asked, you know, where's that money going? Let's just, for once and for all, come back and close this down.
So if members can, you know, me, of some, some questions, I can then collect that together. If anyone thinks they've been meantime, I can add that to this as well. There'll be that, plus the general terms of reference to get with an audit, so you uncover everything. There'll be the general terms of an audit, scope of audit, same sort of thing as an internal audit, plus individual courage raised by members. If councillor wants, I can put an I T audit on another agenda, but that's not what this is.
So we're all in favour of that?
And then receipts.
Public transparence.
Alan?
Yes.
No receipts for everything.
Item number twenty two, freedom of information request, the town clerk to report an anonymized freedom of information request received. And to authorize the respective response accordingly.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The requests this week are about asbestos at the park, the Stogge unit, the head of security role. And the case, or former case against local construction.
Yep. Item number twenty three, subject, subject access request, the town clerk to report on an anonymized subject access request. And to authorize the response accordingly. Alan?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As he says on the tin, I've received a subject access request from a person. I can't tell you who that person's name is. But I do recommend that you have to approve it, Mr Chairman.
So, all in favour of both? Yep?
Yeah.
Yep. So that concludes the, the meeting tonight. I'd like to thank everybody for attending and your questions. You can put forward. Have a safe journey and I'll see you again next week.
Is there any more questions from public? No?
Okay, people, that's it. Meeting's over. That was a civilised one. See you next time.